Good evening, welcome to the Crestwood School District Board of Education meeting. May 1st, 2023. Mr. Secretary, can we get a roll call, please?
Trustee Fawaz.
Here.
Trustee Seba.
Here.
Trustee Williamson.
Here.
Trustee Amon is here. Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Badun.
Here.
Madam President.
Here.
We're all here.
Perfect. We have a quorum. That was called to order at 7:00 PM. Okay, can we have the consent agenda, please? Oh, Pledge of Allegiance. So today we have for our Pledge of Allegiance, we have students from Student Congress, officers of 2023, 2024. We have Manar Hariri, Marwa Adibi, Rami Eder, Yasmin Ahmed, Jenna Sharara, Anna Maria Valianovsky, and Yusuf Hamud. So can you please come forward and lead us in the pledge? Yep, flag's right there. Ready?
I...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Perfect. I have some certificates for you guys here. If you could, please, Manar. Marwa. Rami. Yasmin. Jenna. Anna Maria. Yusuf. Thank you so much. And I did want to take a minute and thank Ms. Jen Ray for coming with her students and just wanted to recognize that she always does a great job with Student Congress. So thank you very much, Ms. Jen Ray. And now we'll go into the consent agenda.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the May 1st, 2023 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, April 17, 2023, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, April 17, 2023, and the check register dated from April 1st through April 30th, 2023. Support?
Recommended consent agenda by Secretary Amon, supported by Trustee Seba, that the Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the Monday, May 1st, 2023 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on May, April 17, 2023, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, April 17, 2023, and the check register dated April 1st through April 30th, 2023. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board Brightener, Dr. Masalim.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Board. Today, we have the honor and the privilege to have Mr. Toxine and the Riverside Middle School Band. So I'd like to invite Mr. Toxine up, who's been doing a wonderful job with our middle school band and growing our program. Mr. Toxine.
Before we get started, I just wanted to say thank you for having us. The community gets to see what the students do, but they always can see, you know, those people that support them. So thank you very much for having us today.
Thank you.
So these students, that in late March, were able to go on a field trip with all the other schools on the districts and statewide to perform at MSBO District Band Festival. And your support was able to allow them this opportunity. So I wanted to share with you one of the pieces. This will be our last piece that they were able to take in their competition. Thank you so much for having us.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've often heard one band, one sound. Do you, wait, do you think we could get introduced to the students before they leave?
Absolutely. You want to know their names?
Yes, please.
Absolutely.
And what grade they're in, maybe?
This is all A-3.
Perfect.
This is our A-3 band. We have Bee, Alexis, we have Alia, Isabella, Dwyala, Isabella. In the back over here, we have Alia, Anna, Janice, Nicole, Holly. We have Lola, we have Yvonne, and we have Noah. All right?
Perfect.
Now, I want to say, if I wasn't from this district and I didn't know they were from Riverside, and I just heard them, I would have sworn they were a high school band that has been doing this for 10 years.
Absolutely.
That's a phenomenal job.
Great job, guys.
Where are you to go?
Thank you, guys, so much.
All right, you've got to carry that on to high school for the marching band. We've got to keep that rolling. Yes. Yes, Mr. Toxine has done some great work with these kids these last couple of years. Even during COVID, they were playing on my home.
Well, you can tell they work hard.
Yes, I remember that. It wasn't as good as then. I'm teasing.
All right.
If you're at home listening, son, I'm sorry.
Next, I doubt he's listening more. Next item, business report. Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. Number one, approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Seba.
Recommended, the Crestwood Board of Education approve their acquisitions per Attachment 5A1. Support?
Recommended action by Trustee Seba, supported by Trustee Amon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per Attachment 5A1. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number two, approval of out-of-state field trip. Crestwood High School Band would like to take their students to Kalahari and Cedar Point. During this trip, the band will be performing at Cedar Point. This will provide the students an opportunity to perform and showcase their talents.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Williamson.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the out-of-state field trip for the Crestwood High School Band per Attachment 5A2. Support?
Support. Recommended item by Trustee Williamson, supported by Trustee Fawaz, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the out-of-state field trip for Crestwood High School Band per Attachment 5A2. Any discussion?
Can I just ask, how many days is this?
It's for two days.
Oh, nice. Hope they have a good time.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel report. Dr. Lazar.
Our first action item, first and only action item in the personnel report today is for the appointment of a guidance counselor for Crestwood High School, Ms. Rola Ador. Ms. Ador earned her Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education from Eastern Michigan University. She's currently attending Spring Arbor University to earn her Master of Arts degree in counseling. She has been filling in as the substitute counselor at Crestwood High School for the past six months and has been a great asset to our team. See Attachment 6A1.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Fawaz.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in Action Item 6A1, Effective Pending Acceptable Criminal Background Check and Other Employment Documentation As Required By Law.
Support?
Recommended action by Trustee Fawaz, supported by Trustee Amon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of the candidate named in Action Item 6A1, Effective Pending Acceptable Criminal Background Check and Other Employment Documentation As Required By Law. Any discussion? I'd just like to say that I've heard good things about Rola from the high school, some families that I know, who she's assisted this year in the months that she's been there. And they're real impressed with her youth and the fact that she's able to do such a good job. So I just, kudos to getting Rola for us. So, all right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report, Dr. Masalim.
We have some employee recognition.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, so we were able to get some more responses to the form. Everybody out there, the link is in the May HR Matters. It'll be coming out tomorrow. So please help us recognize more and more of our outstanding staff at the Crestwood School District. The first employee recognition that was submitted was to recognize Ms. Kathy Materia. Is Ms. Materia here today?
Come on up to the podium, please.
And as she comes up to the podium, I will read the recognition form that was submitted. She willingly agreed to move from the high school to Hillcrest to support a high-needs student. She is the proud owner and handler of Scout the Therapy Dog, who has been an extremely positive influence on the students at Hillcrest. Kathy is a team player and will work to support her students and others. She is an asset to our team, and we are so happy to have her on our team.
Thank you.
What a beautiful dog.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Ms. Materia. Ms. Materia. From all of us, I know we've all said thank you, but honestly, just to read these, I didn't know if we were moving on. I wanted to make sure they were read because these are so important for all of us to hear and to see, that you guys care as much as you do. I just wanted to thank you personally.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Thank you. The next is a recognition for Ms. Veronica Greenlaw. Was Ms. Greenlaw able to make it today? No? We'll have you here on her behalf then, Ms. Sut. Ms. Greenlaw has gone above and beyond to be a part of a plan for a high-needs student. She is a team player, always positive, and engages in meaningful ways with all students. Veronica works on having supportive relationships with her colleagues. We appreciate her willingness to step out of her comfort zone to support the students and the team without hesitation. Veronica focuses on students first in everything she does, and it is evident. We appreciate her and her kind heart. The next recognition is for Ms. Dolores Bowen. Was Ms. Bowen able to make it? Come on up. Ms. Bowen is a hard worker, and for the past seven years, she has tirelessly put students' needs before her own. She is incredibly knowledgeable in her field and is never afraid to share her knowledge with other employees. We have watched her take on roles that are not hers, pick up the slack for other employees, and do this all with a smile on her face and always met with the same determination and heart that she puts into everything she does. Mrs. Howratt's class at Hillcrest would never run as well as it does now without Ms. Bowen. We know that Mrs. Howratt would agree. This district and students could never repay Ms. Bowen for her amazing contribution, but to celebrate her would be a small way to say thanks. Please join us in celebrating one of our Crestwood treasures, Dolores Bowen.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you do. Next, we would like to recognize Ms. Emily Ansonet. I know I saw Emily. And this is written on behalf of her awesome staff, who I think is here to recognize that. She is an excellent example of a great leader to the staff at CHBC. She is an advocate for her staff. She is supportive, encouraging, and collaborative. She has a wealth of early childhood knowledge, leads our preschool program with her heart, and above all, puts the children's needs first. We see her hard work, love, and dedication to our program and building, and believe the district should know. Duly noted. And lastly, we would like to recognize Ms. Zainah Kanafer. Is Ms. Kanafer here today? She is a fifth-grade teacher and goes above and beyond to support her students. Her entire class are English language learners. Many of her students are new to the country and need help not only academically, but also help to acclimate in a new school with new friends, a new culture, and so much more. Ms. Kanafer's classroom is a place where her students can feel safe and supported. She works extremely hard to ensure that she is meeting the needs of all her students, which is a challenge in a classroom of this unique type. She has a smile on her face, there it is, every time you walk into her classroom, even when it has been an overwhelming day. We want to recognize her dedication and commitment to her students. Thank you. Congratulations.
Madam President, if I just may add, you know, it's, as Trustee Seba mentioned, and I know all of you reiterate, we have to celebrate our treasures in our district in every opportunity we can, because there are so many people that go above and beyond and ask for zero accolades, and these are those examples. So I want to thank all of them for all that you do each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Congratulations to you all. Superintendent's report, Dr. Masalim.
Okay, we have board policy items for action items and a few updates, as well as a new course proposal for our elementary and middle school mathematics. So, I'm sorry, K5 mathematics. So we'll start with action item board policy. Board Policy 1000 Administration and 3,000 Professional Staff Templates. The first reading for 1,000 Administration and 3,000 Professional Staff Templates on March 20th, and the second reading took place on April 17, 2023. We're asking the Board to approve Board Policy 1,000 Administration and 3,000 Professional Staff Templates, not including Section 1220 and 1613, as presented in Attachment 7A1.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Seba.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Board Policy 1,000 Administration and 3,000 Professional Staff Templates, not including Sections 1220 and 1613, as per Attachment 7A1. Support?
Recommended action by Trustee Seba, supported by Trustee Amon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Board Policy 1,000 Administration and 3,000 Professional Staff Templates, not including Sections 1220 and 1613, as per Attachment 7A1. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
So the next four items were the two pooled policies. Each one represents the two differing opinions. So you have an A and a B for both. So number two, Board Policy 1220, Employment of the Superintendent A. Board Policy 1220A states that the superintendent shall maintain his or her principal residence within a 20- to 30-mile radius of the geographic boundaries of the district.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Seba.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Section 1220A, see Attachment 7A2. Support?
Recommended action by Trustee Seba, supported by Trustee Amon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Section 1220A, see Attachment 7A2. Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss this.
Go ahead.
I would say that that's really limiting our pool if, you know, Dr. Masalim were to decide to go, right? And I don't think that I would be in agreement with this. We want to be able to pull from the bust if it were to happen. So I don't, I do not agree with this.
I just have a couple of questions. This doesn't mean that you can't get hired if you don't live within the 20 miles. It just means that somebody would have to move here if they get hired.
Correct. So if you were, if I was no longer to be superintendent and you were to hire someone, and they don't live within the 20- to 30-mile radius, part of the agreement to work in the district would be they have to move into the 20- to 30-mile radius.
Correct. Doesn't mean they can't apply, though.
Correct.
Get hired, and then once they're hired, they need to
Correct.
move into the district at that point.
Correct.
Correct? Trustee, uh, Trustee Fawaz, sorry.
Does that mean, are we offering any relocation packages with that?
That wouldn't be part of policy. That would be part of the Board's commitment when they go through the hiring process.
It's a negotiation.
Yeah, it would be a negotiation piece.
Okay.
So, the only thing I have an issue with is the range, 20 to 30 miles. I think from a, from a standpoint of saying 20 to 30 miles, I would say not to exceed 30 miles or not to exceed 30, 35, whatever the rate number is. I wouldn't say 20 to 30, because what if somebody lives 19? I mean, we know the answer to that, right? But if you read it, it's incorrect. It's an incorrect statement.
Well, then, yeah, because if you go by that, does that mean he has to now move?
You have to live within 20 to 30 miles.
You've got to move 20 miles.
Just the way it's written.
Are you ready?
I know the common sense perspective, but...
Madam Chair, I agree. I agree with everything that's being said, and I withdraw my motion simply because the more I think about it, I think we need to have a fine number. I'm okay with the number. I'm okay with us having a number, simply because of, you know, emergencies or anything else that the superintendent needs to be here expeditiously. I don't want somebody who lives an hour and a half away to apply and be hired in, because every time we need something from he or she, they need to drive an hour and a half.
Would you like to amend the motion?
I would like to amend the motion, if that's fine. And I'd like to make it 35 miles, just to be safe. And the reason I say that is, and it's from the outer borders of the furthest, furthest border for the city. So whether it be north, south, east, or west, 35 miles from that furthest line.
Okay. So that's amended to read 35 miles from the furthest line of the district.
A maximum of 35.
A maximum of 35. A maximum of 35. Anybody second that?
Seconded.
Okay. Seconded.
You still have questions?
Yep, I would actually add another, put another motion there. Canada is 20 miles away. Should we state in there that it's got to be within country?
What's wrong?
No.
They haven't worked visa, it's fair.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Well, it's been more about the border backup would be my...
We may offend our neighbors with your...
Okay, so amended and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. I don't think we should limit.
Okay. So we have...
I still have to read the second one because it's on there.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Mosalim.
Thank you. Board Policy 1220, Employment of the Superintendent B. Board Policy 1220B does not state that the superintendent shall maintain his or her principal residence within a 20 to 30 mile radius of the geographic boundaries of the district.
No motion for that, so we'll go on to the next item.
Okay. Next item number four, Board Policy 1613, Student Supervision and Welfare A. Board Policy 1613A states that an administrator shall not transport students in a private vehicle without the approval of the superintendent.
I'm assuming the other one says that...
The other way.
Okay.
So no motion? Number five, Board Policy 1613, Student Supervision and Welfare B. Board Policy 1613B does not state that an administrator shall not transport students in a private vehicle without the approval of the superintendent. So the double nots means that you cannot transport, you must get approval by the superintendent to transport someone in your private vehicle.
An administrator does.
An administrator, yes. So you have to have superintendent approval.
For B, Madam Chair.
Trustee Sabo.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve Section 1613B, see Attachment 7A5.
Support.
Recommended action by Trustee Sabo, supported by Trustee Aiman at the Crestwood Board of Education. Approve Section 1613B, see Attachment 7A5. Discussion?
Again, if I can, is that okay?
Salwa, and then we'll go to you, Nadia.
So myself, I would prefer there was a little more, I guess, detail to this. So this would mean, I guess, prior approval, but would this mean for any event? Anything going on or just like in an emergency where the, you know, you don't want the kid sitting outside and it's raining and there's nobody to pick him up, so he calls you and you approve it? Or I guess, is there, is there more limitation to this? Or just strictly if somebody needs a ride and I'm going to take him and I'll just call, you know, Dr. Mosalim and get the okay?
It's in any event. It's in any event. And the reason why it's in any event is because first, if you think of a medical emergency situation, you want to call 911.
Correct.
And we really don't want students in vehicles by themselves with one adult unless if it's a group trip, like we've approved for transportation.
Right.
If a student is caught in the rain, we get them under shelter, we contact the parents. Because the other part behind that too is, and I know in some situations, there have been situations that I've read and have been witnessed to where you take a child home, but there's nobody home. So what do you do next? Now you're sitting with that child in your car for a longer period of time. You can't leave that child at home by themselves. So this is more on the onus of, we have to make sure that not only are we protecting the children, but we're also protecting the staff.
And Dr. Mosalim, oh Nadia, go ahead. You had your hand.
No, I'm having a hard time with this one also because I feel that if there's an emergency situation, if something happens with the parent and there's an older sibling at home and that child needs to get home, I don't think that an employee should be punished for, you know, trying to be responsible and assist a family in an emergency situation or a non-emergency situation. God forbid something happens, a death or something, and the parents can't come to get this child. Are we going to punish the administrator or the teacher, whoever, to get that child home in a situation such as, I mean, things happen.
That's true.
And I mean, we're adults, our staff has background checks done on them. We're following the state laws. I don't know why we are micromanaging a situation like this. To me, I feel that this is not, I mean, an administrator who has an emergency with a student and the parent says, please, you know, things happen. Let's, I mean, you know what I'm talking about. Things have happened recently. Do we want to limit an administrator or a teacher of following through on an emergency situation? Not meaning medical. We got to really think this through.
Trustee Sabo.
So for the purpose of emergencies, the approval of the superintendent is applicable. Some of the questions that I would have, obviously, we're using the word administrator here, okay? So let's make that very clear. If, with everything that we've seen in the past, and not to say that we don't trust our people, because we do, but if something is ever alleged and the superintendent wasn't made aware of it, that's the only issue I would have, right? And we talked about this when we were, when we were putting this out there. And, you know, I was under the assumption we all agreed that there should be something. And, you know, people are allowed to change their minds, which is fine. But to me, I think if, if somebody keeps taking the same child home, and this is what we talked about over and over and over again, we have a problem. Maybe it's with the household, maybe it's with the relationship, maybe it's with the administrator, maybe it's somewhere. But if it's the same person doing it over and over again, I want him to know that there may be a red flag. For the same person to be taking somebody home all the time and nobody to know, to go under the radar, I hate to say it, but this is a humanistic society. People do things. And I hate to say that every school district is not perfect and we don't hire a perfect 1,000% of the time. And I'm not alleging that anybody is or would do this. But in that case, I just want him to be able to stand up and say, hey, this is the fifth time you've called me for this same child. What's going on here? Right? That's all. And this is administrators. This is administrators. It's not saying teachers, it's not, you know, teachers don't typically, you know, don't typically take students home. It's not saying you can't take a student home. It's saying the administrators. So let's make sure we're clear on that.
Madam Chair. Just so I'm, just so I'm clear too, now that you said that. Does that mean, because I'm thinking in protection of the staff and/or student. So does that mean right now that they can take them home without someone's approval?
Yes.
There currently is not, if I remember correctly, there's no policy at this point saying yea or nay.
So they can?
So it doesn't say they can.
Doesn't say they can't, it doesn't say they can, so there's no...
Right now, right now, it's not addressed. Trustee.
So question is, if, if, God forbid, they get into an accident on the way home, who's liable?
District.
District is liable because they got approval from the superintendent?
Correct.
Now, right now, if they take the child home?
Still the district.
District.
Still the district.
District employee driving.
Yeah.
Nadia?
So have we ever had an incident where this has happened? Because I don't ever recall something like this happening. I mean...
Like what, Nadia?
Have we ever had a child go home with a teacher or an administrator or anybody and have an injury or anything happen? Do we have anything on record of such?
I'm not sure.
From this administration, no. Thank God, and we hope it never does.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we have anything on record that there was an emergency either where...
Yeah, I don't recall it happening with my tenure here. So I just, like I say, I personally cannot micromanage an administrator or a teacher in an emergency situation. You know, they can let you know, but I don't think that, what about if you're out of town or something? Or what about if someone doesn't answer the phone? I mean, we have practices till what, 11, 12 at night? We have drama going on till all hours of the night. Would I want a student to walk home at 11 o'clock? No, I wouldn't. I'd rather be responsible, take the child home, you know, put them at their doorstep and know that they're going into their home rather than have them walking because I can't take them home. So...
Dr. Mosalim, can you just explain what that looks like, getting an approval or like...
If there's a situation where a child is stranded and an administrator contacts me, Linda, Penny, or Andrea, whoever is on call, and says, we got a child that's stranded, nobody's answering the phone, our response would be, okay, did you contact all of the emergency contacts? And if they saw and say, no, I can't get a hold of anybody, I called all five emergency contacts, let's say. Because, you know, each, each emergency card has two and all athletes and drama, they have to have emergency contacts listed. It hasn't happened in our district, but in the past, what has, what we have done is if it was approved to do so, it was multiple people in the car. It would have been multiple, like two adults and three students, you know, type of thing. We prefer not to have one adult and one student. Unless, in certain situations, a parent may, you know, let the adult know, can you please bring my child home? And if it's through a text or an email, you know, then we're okay with that because the parent gave the okay. But usually what it comes down to is we just don't want the children alone with the adult in the car.
Yeah. Also, what about staff who may not be comfortable being asked to take other people's children home? I mean, that leaves it where they don't have to be confrontational and say no. They could just say no.
Well, and staff is not supposed to unless they get permission by the parent and/or school. But this is more for an administrator in terms of a situation where a child, as stated, you know, is stranded or something. You know, it's just, it comes down, you know, it's just best practice that if you ever transport children, it's best practice to have more than one adult and more than one child in the car.
And it's documented.
And it's documented, yes.
Any further discussion?
Can it, can it stay that to where it's more than one? I'm just thinking, like, I would rather they don't do it, period.
So it's more procedure than policy in terms of like stating multiple adults, multiple students.
So the procedure would outline, this is, this is how you go about it. And that's why I asked him, what does it look like if this ever has to come into play? So I think procedure for staff would say, you know, this is what you first do, this is what you do next, this is what you do next. This is how you do it.
So I'd like to ask, so if we have drama going on, I know drama stays late, right?
Ten right now.
Ten?
So what does that look like now, David?
I mean, there's like so many kids with cars, I mean, because it's all great, seniors. So, I mean, drama or band is probably like a bad example because there is...
Oh, yeah.
Somebody has cars, they're all friends, somebody gives a hey, can I have a ride? And it's not an issue. Now, I mean, there has been instances coming back from field trips for band where he is stuck with a student because the parents, you know, I mean, coming back on a Saturday at nine, and where's the parents? So, I mean, it could foreseeable happen in like a band situation because they travel a lot on Saturdays and he's got to stick around till the last kid's gone.
Okay.
Let me, let me reiterate what it says. Not that everybody doesn't know, that an administrator, that an administrator shall not transport students in a private vehicle. And he just got done saying that if it's a teacher, they need to get approval from the administrator.
Correct.
And if it's an administrator, they need to get approval from them.
Correct.
So I, I don't think we're saying, no, you can't take them home, or no, you can't give them a ride. I just, it's saying document that you gave them a ride.
That's not what it says. Then we need to reword it.
To me, an administrator, if administrator needs to get approval, then I would hope that he's documented. If a teacher's needed to get approval, I would hope that the principal or the administrator would document it. And if that's not the case, then that's what they should be doing.
And then for athletics or even, it would be the athletic director because they're an administrator.
Correct. So my, my point being, this is talking about the administrator. And I can't, if I were to call the school principal at Crestwood and say, when was the last time you gave a child a ride home? I don't think Mr. Abul Hadi could probably think of that or answer that, right?
He'll tell you none.
Okay. My point being, I think this is nothing more than a what if? And if this happens, then let's just make sure we're protected. And again, to me, I don't have a problem with them giving them a ride. I just think somebody should know because if it's happening often periodically, there's red flags. That's all I'm saying, you know? One way or the other, from the family or from the situation.
Thank you. Trustee Baydun, and then we'll vote.
I think sometimes you just have best practices in place as opposed to actual rules because when you do create rules like this, you are exposing yourself as a district legally. Because if somebody does make a mistake, and I can guarantee you, people will make a mistake, you're exposing yourself because now you are putting it on the district. If we have a best practice where people shouldn't do it, or if it's happening multiple times, they should always let the administration know. So I agree with half of it.
But we're still liable, huh?
We're still liable, either way.
That's what he's trying to say, regardless, we're liable.
Yeah, but...
With or without it.
But from a legal perspective, sometimes if they, if we have best practices where we don't do things and someone does it, that's, that's an argument for a higher court. It's not black and white. But when you sign up for this, it becomes black and white. That's all I'm saying.
It's a district employee giving the child a ride.
I get it. But if he's not supposed to...
Still a district employee. I don't know, I'll leave that to you, I guess.
So I'm going to call the questions so we can vote. Let's vote on this and then I'll just remind everybody, all of these policies that we've been working on, none of them are set in stone.
No.
Any problem that we can see at any time, we can bring it up to the administration's attention. We can review it again and that way we'll have examples of why the policy is or isn't working and be able to, you know, make a determination at that point too, if we so choose. So I'm going to ask all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me, no.
Okay. Motion carries. Next item.
Next item, new course proposals, iReady Classroom Mathematics. The K-5 math pilot ran with K-5 grade teachers for the 23-24 school year. The Crestwood School District Curriculum Council approved to recommend iReady Classroom Mathematics as the K-5 math program on April 5th, 2023.
Madam Chair.
Trustee Sabo.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve iReady Classroom Mathematics as the K-5 math program to be placed on the schedule in the upcoming 2023-2024 school year.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Sabo, supported by Trustee Aiman, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve iReady Classroom Mathematics as the K-5 math program to be placed on the schedule in the upcoming 2023-2024 school year. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
So can you just shed more light on this to me? So, and maybe Mr. Favors could help here a little bit. Help me understand, are we going for math? Are we just going strictly iReady now in the classroom for K through 5?
Correct. Okay. That being said, that is the main...
Well, he asked you questions, correct to which part?
Well, that is the main resource that we're going to be using.
The iReady?
Is it the, oh, yes.
Okay.
And we're purchasing the program and all that comes with it. Will that be the only thing that our teachers use? No, there are supplemental things that the teachers may use for...
Well, that's just it because when I, I'm not going to give my personal opinion about iReady, whether it's yea or nay, I'm just looking at this. But from a parent who's not as involved in the schools as some of us are, right? iReady, to me, is very self-sufficient, right? Kids know, once they know how to get on it, they go through it, they do their thing. You're shaking your head, no. I've been through iReady, I've seen it, so correct me if I'm wrong.
The program we're adopting is the actual curriculum with the books, the lessons, the teacher manuals. It's not just the online component that the students do independently.
Okay. So we still have teachers teaching as opposed to following the actual iReady testing that I've seen.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, this is, it's going separate from...
See, Mr. Favors, I knew she had the answer. I just wanted to wake you up over there.
But that's why he's here though. I made him stay in case I didn't.
Trustee Aiman?
So question, is this one of the best programs we can have right now for the kids?
Yes, it will be for sure. It's the first one that we've really made the elementary school cohesive with and we're really proud of that.
Thank you. Trustee Sabo.
How do the teachers feel about iReady?
Oh my God.
So they feel, the ones that piloted it feel, feel great about it. It was unanimous when it came to the teachers and it was also unanimous when it came to the curriculum council.
So unanimous means none were opposed to iReady?
Correct.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure because, you know, obviously, I know you guys are bringing this to us and I'm all about it because I believe in it, but I want to make sure that the teachers are about it too.
I shouldn't say that no one was opposed to it. There was a couple that were on the fence. I shouldn't say that. No one was opposed to it. I, I, there was a couple that were on the fence. I think maybe there was, I think out of the nineteen teachers I believe we had, I think maybe one or two.
What was the opportunistic feedback that they gave you?
Yeah, but, and we have, it's in the survey, it's on that document, there's, there's cert, surveys, uh, from the teachers, and the overwhelming majority, um, was to go with iReady.
So the feedback's in here?
Yes.
The curriculum co, council process, the way we're doing it now is that it goes through a pilot program. So you have, the curriculum council and the elementary math teachers looked at different math programs. We identified iReady, and what was the other one?
Reveal.
Reveal Math. Because we don't ha, we did not, and we still don't have, a math curriculum in our K-5. This is why we started with math. And through that pilot process, you have some teachers do the reveal, you have some teachers do the iReady. They pre-test, they continue to test, they post-test, and they converse in their PLCs. They talk about what's working, what's not working, so that when they come to curriculum council, they present their findings, and then curriculum council makes a vote. Um, of course, within any programs, you're gonna have some people that like another program more than the other. But the iReady package that comes together received the vast majority of votes to move forward with. So now we will have a K-5 math curriculum, and we're, that's, this is the process. We started with elementary math. Next step is we're looking at literacy, and we're gonna continue growing from there. Because again, prior to this, we really didn't have a cohesive, consistent math program in the elementary schools.
Really quickly to add to that, if I may. Um, between the two teachers, the group that piloted the reveal math, and correct me if I'm wrong, and the group that piloted the iReady, they both rated their programs according to the same rubric. And overwhelmingly, um, iReady performed well and had more positive feedback on those different components, um, side by side utilizing the results of that rubric.
Because we don't have that in here. That's why.
It was attached to the proposal, I think.
In that form where it says.
No, I, I mean, the feedback.
Oh, yeah.
It's all attached. It's all attached in that, in that document. It's all there.
Trustee Beidun?
So it looks like we're really getting invested with iReady, right, as a district? Have we looked at the cost compared to the other?
I believe the cost breakdowns were in Mr. Fabres's proposal that he had shared on his Friday updates this month.
I'm saying compared to the other.
They're both there.
We have, no, I, I, I'm.
You're talking about other assessments?
Yes.
Because iReady is an assessment.
Right.
And it's also a mathematical program.
Right. The curriculum program stuff is in there.
But iReady, I just, you know, the reason why we are focusing so much on iReady is because iReady is directly aligned with the Michigan State standards. And it focuses on evaluation of the students and growth within those standards. The other assessment programs do more of a national norm, like NWEA, it's a national norm. So it'll compare you nationally to how other students are doing.
So which one is better aligned with the ACT SAT?
The iReady.
The iReady. Okay, that was my question.
Yeah.
So, we're, again, going back to my original thing, we're getting really vested with iReady as a company. Have we looked at any potential rebates, anything from a long-term contract? Because you're not gonna know how great this is in a year. This is gonna take probably three years, in my opinion, right, to really get the curriculum going and to see the results. Hopefully, it's quicker. But did we reach out to iReady in regards to that kind of negotiation? Because we're, we're, I mean, we're going here.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money, right?
Well, we're really. The iReady assessment piece has already been paid through 23-24. So that piece, and, and with that, when we purchased it, we did get discounts for the multi-year purchase.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes.
And, and this is 23-24 also. So now we're just doing add-ons, right?
Right. So we had originally purchased it a couple of years ago, and I, I wanna say it was 2021. And so we had purchased a four-year for 2021, 21, 22, 23, 22, 23, and 23, 24. And so we did get a big discounted rate to purchase the multi-year programs.
And now this, they're all gonna be over at the end of '24?
The, the assessment portion, yes.
And, and this also, because this says just 23-24?
Well, the, these materials are actually materials that, um, for the curriculum, you purchase a one-time thing.
Okay, got it.
And so then the supplemental materials are different.
It's like à la carte then, as you.
Yes.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
And they provided, uh, iReady provided a one-year, a three-year, and a five-year contract in that report. So there's, there's three different options.
Yeah, I was just thinking cohesively, because you have the add-ons and then that's all.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, I just know that we've talked about the iReady and the data that it's providing for us, and we were able to see the growth that the students are making. So really, it's quality over quantity. Um, and I'm sure that's what the, right, we saw more growth, more data. So I'm hoping that this is the reason. And I know, I remember Mr. Owada when he first came here. Um, he was like really, um, pushing for it. And I can understand why after you guys have been providing us with the information. So, good move on our district and finally getting a curriculum, a math curriculum, I should say. Because you're right, we did not, we were all over the place. So hopefully, this brings everybody together.
And I, I do wanna let the board know, the one negative thing with curriculum reviews, especially with where we're at, it's a slow process.
Right.
And that's the problem. And you, it's really hard to pilot more than one curriculum at a time because you, you put a lot of stress on the teachers. But the teachers are a major component of the process. There is much more we have to do, and we're ready, getting ready to start looking at what are our next steps. And curriculum council, which is, it's a team of teachers, they give us their feedback. They literally run it. Joel moderates. So, uh, when it comes back to this team, the teachers are actively involved in these processes. We are not making any decisions at the top and trickling it down to them. We're asking them for their feedback and their input. And then we do look at the cost. You know, we're gonna make sure we're not gonna pay, you know, we're not gonna go broke on a program. But we're also, like you said, qual, quality over, uh, cost.
Okay.
If it's, if it's worth it for the kids, I think.
Oh, of course.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. So informational items. Uh, board policy, second reading, 2,000 program templates. You receive those in your packet to review for this weekend, the Board of Education. And Crestwood Administration reviewed board policy, 2,000 program templates on March 20th and April 17th, 2023. This is the second reading of 2,000 program templates as presented in 7C1. So we'll be voting on those at the next board meeting.
Correct.
Uh, I would like to congratulate our Chargers Robotics for making it to Worlds. I mean, I know you saw the emails and all the different things going on. There were 600 teams from all over the world that competed. And in our division, there were 77 teams in our division, and we ranked 23rd. So for the first time to be in that, congratulations to Chargers Robotics. Anybody here from Chargers Robotics? Anybody here? Okay, well, Pete's been a little busy, him and his team, getting ready for the next things. Uh, some important end of the year dates. Uh, oh, first off, I, then also, I'm just trying to make sure I'm going in order. National Student Council, we had distinguished student leaders, Celine Fawaz and Hattie Salome. Approximately 800 students in total in the nation were achieved this recognition. It's sponsored by the National Student Council, National Association of Secondary School Principals. So congratulations, Ms. Ray, to your team. Uh, are they here, by the way?
One of them is. No?
No?
Oh, no.
Okay. Um, so some important dates coming up. We have Riverside Middle School Honors Program, and, uh, um, Kristen has them all on the calendar. Uh, fifth and sixth grade will be June 5th, seventh grade will be June 7th. Eighth grade honors, uh, and promotion, eighth grade A through E, June 5th. Eighth grade F through Z, June 7th. They're all on the calendar. I gotta go back up to CHS important end of the year dates. Senior prom is May 5th. Senior finals are May 24th and 25th. Senior graduation rehearsal and clap out is June 1st. Uh, honors night is June 1st, and graduation is June 3rd. As a reminder, graduation will be at the Plymouth Ice Arena because of the work we're doing on our outdoor complex. And hopefully, next year, we'll be on our new complex. So it'll be nice. Uh, kindergarten roundups, that time of year, all elementary schools will be hosting kindergarten roundup on Wednesday, May 3rd, 6 to 7 p.m. Our 21st Century Virtual Learning Program already started open enrollment for grades seven through 12. Enrollment is open through May 26th. Families are notified of accept, will be notified of acceptance by June 16th. Want to promote and remind everybody, SpongeBob the Musical, I know I'm taking your thunder, trustee Williams, but you can say it again to remind everyone, SpongeBob the Musical opens this Saturday, May 6th, and it's on the 12th and the 13th at 7 p.m., and then May 7th at 3 p.m. I'll be at the May 7th show. I'll be at the matinee. Um, it, come out and see it. I tell you, our drama and our band, and I mean, our arts are killing it. God bless them. So, they're doing some great things. Teacher Appreciation Week, May 8th through May 12th. Look, we don't need a week to appreciate teachers. We always appreciate you, but it's nice to have a week dedicated to you. So we wanna tell all the teachers thank you. We appreciate everything that they do, and there'll be more information coming. I know our PTAs and all of our groups are gonna be doing things for our teachers. I think our teachers gained maybe 30 pounds during Teacher Appreciation Week.
Give them a round.
Yeah, so let's give it a round of applause. Nothing like saying thank you with food. And finally, just my commentary, um, I just have one quick thing to say. You know, today you saw our Riverside Middle School band. You had, what, four or five employees, staff members of our district who get recognized. No matter what, I am gonna say this, and I'm gonna say it very clear. This administration with the support of this board will support our best people. And we will do what is right for our best people, and we'll continue to do what is right for our best people, and we will be fair to everyone. Because there's a lot of shining stars in our district, a lot of shining stars that we need the rest of the community to see. They're the ones that are making a difference. So we appreciate everything and everyone. So thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Kristen, do we have any public comment cards? No? Okay.
Oh, we didn't recognize Scout? We have to, right, well, Scout came out with, uh, Ms. Metrak. If you wanna bring Scout back up. Ms. Matera, sorry.
Bring him up here. Let him walk around. We'll give Scout his own show. Hi, Scout?
What a beautiful.
Hi, come here.
I, I wanna give credit to Mrs. Matera, tremendous credit, because this was her idea. And she pitched it to me several times because she knew how much it would help our students. And I will tell you, Ms. Matera did all the late work. She got all the certifications, she went and got the training. Scout was trained. Our kids love him. So I have to say.
So what is Scout's role?
So Scout is a, um, his role is, um, he works with the kids in the classroom. Um, some of our children that are, um, high flyers or need a break, um, he walks down the halls with them, or they come into the room and they cut them. Um, he greets the kids in the morning off the school bus and the bus driver. He climbs up on the bus drive, the bus, and says the horny. Um, he's just a joy to have. And thank you to Dr. Masalim for finding someone for us to go through.
And it worked, if, if someone I used to work with.
Yeah.
So, uh, Dr. Masalim?
He's a certified therapy dog, if I ask.
Right, and I, a lot of police departments are doing that now for that, uh, social, emotional, which is great.
I hear about Scout every day. Every day.
Yes, with Bazzie, Puggies, with Bazzie, Puggies, yeah.
Oh, he's waiting.
Please look at his chops.
Thank you so much.
And his brother, Theo, which is my other golden doodle, just got certified. And he will start next week and be Tuesdays and Thursdays after Scott.
Thank you for everything you do.
Are they twins? Do they look alike?
Your part.
All right.
Yeah.
So is he in certain classrooms or, uh?
Um, my main room is Mrs. Rutz's room, so he's in there. But if a Pyra has a child that needs to walk, then we switch roles. So she'll come in my room and be with my one-on-one, and I'll take her child with Scout.
Nice. What differences have you seen in the development of the kids having the dog?
Um, they, they're more, more eager to come to school. Like, one day, the one child knew that it was the day Scout wasn't gonna be there, and he's like, I'm coming off the bus. And I said, why? He's like, Scout's not a scouting.
Oh, wow.
And, um, friendships, it's built friendships. A lot of them are like talking with each other and responsibility is built.
We should be the model school across the state.
Yeah, we, we wrote it, so we.
Did you?
We did reach out to, uh, some youth, um, agencies as far as on scouting, a therapy dog. Uh, in addition to that, there's an after-school, uh, club.
Uh, there's a book club too. So I run it as a restorative practice. So we talk about, last week, we talked about worrying, and we read a book, we wrote a book, a book about worrying, and, um, we talked about the meat testing and, you know, what did they worry about? So, we run it as a restorative practice, and then at the end, they break off into small groups, and Scout walks around and reads.
So are you, are you noticing like less behavioral issues?
So particularly with the one-on-one that Ms. Matera works with, um, we've, uh, seen, I mean, he was a, she references a frequent flyer, a tier-three student with wraparound services. And when I tell you, um, what, we meant like three, four months with no, where, where he was being suspended maybe every week?
Oh, man.
I kid you not, to no suspension for four months. Um, would you say that, uh, that's an improvement? Definitely.
Definitely.
In addition to that, I'm telling you, there are non-verbal, uh, students who are non-verbal that where, well, they'll do is they'll walk with, uh, Scout. Um, you know, a few of our students with ASD are in the cross categorical room, um, you know, when they need a break. It's a break with a purpose. And, and Scout is very aware, I kid you not. Um, we've seen a few individuals who, like, maybe, um, the UPS guy, you know, would come to the school, and he knows, it's weird, he knows that he's not a typical member of the school community. So.
He wasn't playing well for our security guard.
Yeah, and he'll start to bark, and he'll start, so.
Because it wasn't of the original security guard.
Yeah.
So we're gonna need one at every school?
I, ironically, ironically, there, um, one day someone was filling in for another security guard, right? And Scout, right away, started to almost.
This was also our security guard. I love it.
But, yeah, it's, it's amazing because he doesn't bark. And so if he does, you know, and then of course, all you have to say to that name, and I won't say it because I'll go crazy, um, uh, because right across from Mrs. Rutz's room is Miss.
Say it.
Miss Bazzie. And he just goes.
He's busy.
But Miss Bazzie is my designated person, so if my child, the nine-month starts to escalate, and he's with us, that's the room. He gets tossed over and.
All parents, FYI, all parents were informed, um, of this, a letter was sent out. Uh, in addition to that, again, uh, cards were given with Scout's, uh, you know, uh.
Picture?
Credentials and whatnot as, as a therapy dog. Uh, so, and, and just, it's, the need is so high, so that's why she went ahead and got another, another dog. And just, you know, and it works great because we're the Hillcrest Huskies, right? And so the paw print is.
It doesn't look like a husky.
I know. But the paw print, you know, is symbolic in, in that sense. And so, um, being able to have a, uh, a therapy dog, I think, is just, it's such a great highlight.
So all the kids were very receptive.
Wow. Wow. You should see, but first graders, second graders, kindergarten kids go crazy. Um, but he, he's just a part of the, uh, and I know that Kathy has a PowerPoint, um, that, you know, that we're, we're hoping to share one day maybe with the board about kinda like what, what, what Scout has done and some of the improvements that we, uh, the, the culture and climate in that school has, has really changed tremendously. Um, and we've, you know, they've embraced it. It's not just obviously Scout, the mission to Scout, all the other things, like the after-school programs, uh, and whatnot. Um, and just watching him, you know, during recess, I mean, they're all running around with Scout.
Sure.
I'm in trouble when I get home. My dog's gonna go nuts knowing I was petting another dog right now.
So I'm sure this allows for us to have more grants and different monies just for this program, right?
Well, right now, it's all out of, I, there's definitely, uh, room to, to, you know, discuss them.
There is not much when it comes.
No.
Yeah.
It's not.
Because this is, this is, it's research proven, but it hasn't been.
It's fairly new.
Well, you guys can be the lead.
Livonia's trying to figure out how to do it, because we've been to Livonia schools a few times.
Who's incurring the cost right now for?
Ms. Matera.
Um, we have a sponsor.
Yeah.
Premier Pet Supplies is our sponsor.
Say that again. Who was that?
Premier Pet Supplies.
Where are they located?
Um, they're located Wesley and Livonia, um, Novi, they have.
So we should thank Premier Pet Supplies.
Yeah, and Andrea O'Hara has been a tremendous proponent of this. She has helped tremendously, and she has helped with getting these supports. Andrea has been working very closely with the county as well to find all, other means. So between, you know, Andrea and Smatera, we, we've been able to make this work, and we're looking at future possibilities. It's one more thing I added to Andrea's plate to continue to do great things with, so.
Thank you very much.
Oh, good. Yes, they're very good.
They just picked up a new coin.
And he gives a 15% discount on all his names.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scout.
I just wanted to ask, who takes him out for his bathroom breaks?
He only goes out at lunchtime.
Oh, nice. So he's well-trained. Uh, we can take three more, right? One for each building. Beautiful dog.
Okay, so now we'll go to, uh, board comments, I believe? I'm not missing anything, right? Okay.
No.
Trustee Sabo, we start with you?
Uh, yeah, I'd, I'd like to start off by congratulating the, um, the employee recognition recipients, Ms. Matera, Ms. Greenlaw, uh, obviously, uh, Ms. Bowen, Ms. Ansonic, and Ms. Conafford. Thank you. You guys are really the core of all this, and that leads me right into Appreciation Week. Teachers, I've always felt, are the engine that drives this vehicle. Without you, there's, there's no movement of our children, not today, not tomorrow, or ever, so thank you. I think Dr. Mussalem said it best. We shouldn't have just a week to, to celebrate you, but we'll just highlight it even more. Thank you for everything you do. Uh, congrats to our seniors. You're ready to get out into the real world. I, uh, wish you all the best. Obviously, we'll see you guys quite a bit here over the next month. Uh, juniors, you're on the clock. Uh, it's your turn to kind of lead and, and, uh, I want to say, follow in the footsteps, which seem to get bigger and bigger every year, because our academics are only reaching higher and higher, um, plateaus. So we're excited to see what you guys are going to do. I think we had thirty-plus that were accepted to top universities around the country this year. You know, no, uh, no pressure, but let's see if you can beat that. And last but not least, I wanted to, um, so this might have slipped under the radar. Uh, I want to congratulate, well, I want to thank Mr. Mike Berry. The reason I want to thank Mr. Berry is, Mr. Berry has done so much for the school district over the last decade in the sense of changing the culture of the athletic program, working with our, with, with our students over the years. Uh, last year, when our athletic director, uh, resigned, Dr. Mussalem asked him to step in, uh, tempor, you know, on a interim basis. And he's done everything we've ever asked of him. He has just been, just a fantastic person for this entire school district. And I just want to thank him for everything that he's done, including taking on the program over the last year. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said.
Uh, first of all, I'd, uh, hope, wish all of the seniors a happy and safe prom this Friday. Um, and repetition is good for memory, so the.
We heard you're going to drive around the building.
Huh? No. I can though, I can. So, uh, starting this Saturday, SpongeBob Play, it's six, seven P M. Sunday, they're having a matinee, if you're not good in the evenings, at three P M. And then next week on the twelfth and the thirteenth, um, seven P M showings again. Next Saturday, the band is having their annual Mother's Day Flower Sale over at Riverside. And we're going to try a pancake breakfast this year, so that'll be from nine to eleven.
Thank you. Trustee Berry?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, I love the fact that we're doing this, uh, employee recognition. I think that's well-deserved. With that, I'm, Ms. Emily Ansonic was here. I wanted to ask, I, we have, I haven't received anything on, where are we with, uh, if we can maybe in the next report? CHBC?
Yeah.
Updates?
We'll send you.
Like, where are we? That would be great. And then I read, Ms. Osinski resigned or re-retired, which was it? Just wanted to congratulate her. I know she's been with us for quite a few years. I remember my son was a.
Resigned.
Oh, she resigned?
Yes.
Her letter is in the, uh.
Oh, is it?
The letter she sent, it's in the board pack.
I went through the whole thing today. Really?
In the board pack.
Oh, that, yeah.
The, uh, your update.
Yes, yes, maybe that's where I read it. Okay, so, uh, with that, congratulations to her, I mean, if it's a good thing. Um, and, uh, congratulations to our seniors, who are, will be leaving us soon. Best of, uh, luck to you in your future endeavors, and we'll hopefully see you at your graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Eamon?
So, uh, just echo off of, uh, what trustee Williamson said, is the SpongeBob Musical coming up? And also Riverside has their, uh, their play May fifth and May sixth. Did someone say murder? Uh, that should be nice.
That's the name, that's the name of the, the.
That's the name. Of the play. Also, congratulations to our seniors, uh, you guys are a month away. Uh, like trustee Sabo said, you're about to enter the real world. And we wish you all the best, and I'm actually excited with all of these invitations to honors nights and, and commencement. And, um, next week, make sure we all, uh, support and thank our teachers, even though we should be thanking them every day. We thank them for all the work that they do, and especially all with the special recognitions that we've been doing, that's, it's amazing. Because they are, they are truly the, they're on the forefront, and they, they do a great job. And thank you, Scout, for everything that you do. I appreciate you. I hear stories about you every day. And that's about it.
Thank you. Trustee Bedu?
Sure.
I'm done.
No more? Okay.
Um, I just, you know, I echo everything everyone else said. The only thing is, uh, you know, I've seen a lot of seniors volunteer this year, throughout the year, right? There is a lot of volunteering. The one most important thing is, I think, don't wait till you're a senior to do it. This goes for everyone. I think Crestwood, the district in itself, does a great job of getting volunteers out and doing these type of things. So continue to do those things, because you're going to do it for the rest of your life, hopefully, and just help others. I think, to me, that's the most important thing, is we continue to give back, whether it's, you know, some people do it financially, some people do it, uh, with time spent, some people do it emotionally, whatever it is. Uh, just continue to give back, and congratulations to the seniors that are exiting.
Trustee Fawaz?
I'm going to say all the same thing. No, congratulations to everyone. I'll add on, um, my senior daughter, Mediam. But congratulations to all the teachers, all the employee recipients. Uh, look forward to all the different, um, events coming up, because there's so many in the next month, month or so. So graduation, prom, all of it. So hopefully has, everyone has a great time, stay safe, and look forward to all of it.
Prom, which you're not invited to, because your daughter won't let you.
Prom, which I'm not invited to, right. I might just show up, no. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, so I'll close out by, you know, echoing everybody's sentiments. I just wanted to thank everybody who came out to the meeting today and participated, whether you said the pledge, played band, got recognized. We thank you all for being here. This was a piece that I spoke with Dr. Mussalem about, uh, a little bit after November. And, um, we just, you know, we wanted, you know, to bring the district into the meetings. So whether you're here, or whether you're watching at home, you get a chance to see all the wonderful things that go on here in the Crestwood District. I also wanted to say congratulations to our teachers, and a special thank you to our teachers, uh, for teacher appreciation. I know that there's so much that you do, that you don't sign up for, or you, that you didn't sign up for, but you still, um, willingly march on and, and do those things, so thank you very much. I have a couple other things here. Um, to our seniors, uh, and really to everybody. I know that spring is upon us, even though the weather doesn't tell us that. But, uh, spring is upon us, and I know that this is a, a happy time. It's a time of celebrating, and everybody gets excited. I just want to remind our seniors and everybody in our district, please stay safe. Um, I'm going to use something that my grandmother used to tell us, she used to tell us, walk on your feet, not on your head. And that was just always a reminder to us to just try to stay safe. We know there's a lot of things going out there, uh, going on out there with celebrations. And, uh, we just want everybody to think before you act. Also, I don't think we meet before the fourteenth, which is Mother's Day. So I wanted to wish all the mothers a very happy Mother's Day. Whether, um, you know, you're a mother, or you've stepped in and played that role, if you're an amazing aunt, um, an amazing guardian, uh, happy Mother's Day to all of you. We know it's not easy, so congratulations to all of our mothers out there.
Yay.
With that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair?